I will now call the July 16th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. We have visiting with us tonight Troop 1161. I'm gonna have you start making your way up here and face the flag. We're going to stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will turn around, look at you, and then you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Does that work for you?
Yep.
All right, let us stand and observe a moment of silence.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch us later on on YouTube. The next item is the consent agenda. Unless there are items to be pulled, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye. We're going to make an adjustment to the agenda and move Item 10, the public hearing, to be the next item. So that will become Item 4, and then everything else will just move down one. And with that particular one, all I need is a motion to continue that to the August 6th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Now we'll move down to the public hearing on the Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter into the record. Exhibit 1, council information form with attachments. Notice of public hearing sent to property owner on June 22nd, 2018. Notice of public hearing as published in the examiner on July 3rd and July 10th, 2018. Memorandum from Gilmore &amp; Bell dated July 5th, 2018. Developers financial projections and budget submitted May 15th, 2018. City clerk verification of the petition dated May 25th, 2018. And Bill Number 4577 with petition attached as Exhibit A and cooperative agreement attached as Exhibit B. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you, Mr. David Bouchette, on behalf of the city.
Good evening, David Bouchette, with the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell, Economic Development Legal Counsel for the city. I will be presenting a brief, high-level overview of the Community Improvement District for the city. I will leave the actual discussion of what they are going to do with the site to the developers' presentation, who will be speaking next. This is a proposal to form a community improvement district on the Sunset Plaza property. The CID would impose a 1-cent additional sales tax just on that property, and it would be, so it would serve as a reimbursement source to the developer for reimbursable project costs associated with improving the property. The total budget for the project is about $5.56 million, and the total reimbursement from the CID is proposed to be about $1.9 million, which is roughly 35%, 36% of the total project costs. The district is only going to fund eligible service costs within its boundaries after all the hard costs are paid off. The developer, based on their revenue projections, has estimated that we'll take the full 20-year period of the CID, or close to it, to potentially reimburse them for all of their hard costs in the amount that I just mentioned. And so it's very unlikely that the district will actually fund services, it would primarily serve as a reimbursement source for their hard costs associated with improving the site. The maximum hard cost of reimbursement is about $1.79 million, plus the operating cost that's incorporated into the number that I just mentioned to you. The developer's requesting that the property be declared blighted by a finding that you would make as part of the ordinance that you would approve to authorize the CID, and the developer has submitted a blight study, which indicates that the property is blighted and supports your finding if you make that finding as part of your approval. The developer's going to provide all of the initial financing for the project, so they're not proposing to issue bonds. They're not proposing that the CID or the city issue bonds, so they will initially fund all of the costs to improve the site, and then the CID reimbursement will simply reimburse the developer over time as it produces revenue from that additional 1-cent sales tax. There is no additional reimbursement that is being requested by the developer from the city, so all of the city's sales taxes that are generated by the project continue to flow as normal, and the developer's not requesting a reimbursement from those sales tax revenues that would be generated by the city or any other taxing district. Once the district is formed, it will be governed by a five-member Board of Directors, and the city will have the right to designate one of those five representatives on the board, which will primarily serve as a, kind of an oversight role on behalf of the city when the district meets, takes action, approves its budgets, and holds annual meetings. The final item of note that I have from my notes that I've included in the memo to the city council, which I mentioned previously, but just to make clear, the sales tax only applies to this property, does not apply anywhere else in the city, does not apply on adjacent property just within the boundaries of the shopping center. That concludes my initial comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or could also answer questions after the developers' presentation.
Are there any questions from the council or Mr. Bouchette?
Afterwards, I think, yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Evan Fitz, on behalf of the developer?
Thank you very much. Evan Fitz with Pulsonelli Law Firm, here tonight on behalf of the owner and developer of the project, Enterprises Sunset Plaza LLC. That name might not-
Okay, and since you're not representing the city, I need you to be sworn in.
Oh, okay.
Do you sound as though you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Okay, you can pick up where you left off.
Okay. The first part was truthful. I promise. So, here tonight on behalf of Enterprises Sunset Plaza LLC, which is the owner of the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center, that name won't mean anything to you necessarily, but so that you know, the owners of that entity are the same principals of the White Oak project that has been so successful for the city, and the primary goal of making this investment is, of course, this is essentially the front door to White Oak from 40, so it makes sense for them to go out and acquire this property, protect their investment, protect all the great things they're doing over there, which, by the way, I drove by this evening, it looks very good, it's coming together so well, took a walk around the grocery store, it's a big grocery store, but they're doing very good business over there, and obviously that commercial area for the city is kind of on the up, so for them to go out and acquire Sunset Plaza made a lot of sense as a spin-off from that investment, and maybe if there'd been a little bit more foresight, you could've wrapped the two together, and the structure we're proposing tonight is, of course, already in place at White Oak, but because of the timing, it makes sense to kind of approach the two separately. I do have also with me tonight Justin Kaufman from Cadence Commercial Real Estate, who you'll remember from White Oak, he was one of the development, the development guys managing that investment for the Cosentino, so he'll speak briefly about kind of what's going on with the project as well. So, you know, what we're proposing here, David went through it, I don't need to rehash it, it's a 20-year CID at 1% additional sales tax, and the difficulty you have, I know you're all familiar with the center, the difficulty you have in going out and evaluating whether it's appropriate to make a significant reinvestment is whether you can do that in the face of current, you know, vacancy rates over at that site. I think, Justin, you can speak to this, I think it's currently about 2/3 vacant, somewhere thereabouts, so you have 1/3 occupancy, but you're trying to take this center to the next level, so do you go out, do you make the investment kind of on the spec in the hopes that your lease rates will justify it in the future, that you'll be able to attract the tenants, or do you go out and make the investment in the hopes that you can bring them in and that you'll get repaid on it? Here we kind of propose a little bit of a hybrid. They want to go out and undertake this investment, they want to utilize this mechanism, the CID mechanism, to provide some level of additional financing that makes them confident that what they're doing is going to be repaid over some period of time. David kind of hit on the numbers a little bit. The total investment here, by the time you acquire the land, redo the properties, about $5.6 million. We've named in the CID petition about $1.9 million is eligible for CID reimbursement. We really, truthfully, expect that the net present value of the revenues of the CID over 20 years to be worth to us in today's dollars about $900,000. So David said, the only thing I would take issue with in his presentation, he said that we're looking at 36%, 37% reimbursement, it's probably more like 16% reimbursement, 900 on $5.6 million, because, of course, we have to generate that money over time, but make the improvements upfront. So we're talking about, if you want to compare apples to apples, it equates more like that. Our goal's pretty simple here, we want to remediate the blight at that center, I mentioned already, we want to protect the investment that's been made at White Oak and sort of continue to open that area up, that corner's doing so well, and this would just be another great reinvestment for it. We want to increase occupancy, decrease vacancy. I think you all have seen recently, and Justin will talk a little bit about this, but I think you've seen the changes in the plans that are proposed with this renovation about opening up the center, adding some out-person development, trying to attract new users and kind of bridge off of the great work that's been done at White Oak. So it's really all about that. It's a continued investment by a company, a group of investors that have continued to make investments here in the city. They're very excited and bullish on the future of Blue Springs and want to continue to do business here, and this is just another expansion of that. So I'll let Justin talk a little bit about the particulars of what they're planning out there, and then I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, Justin, would you like to come in, up and be sworn in, and we might inform the lady that just came in where she's parked, she can get towed. This lady just standing, she's standing right back there, was one of staff members, let her know she just parked in a tow zone. Okay.
I do. Hi, my name's Justin Kaufman, I'm with Cadence Commercial Real Estate, here also on behalf of the ownership group, Enterprises Sunset Plaza LLC. I'm also a member of Enterprises White Oak LLC Development Associates, which did the White Oak Shopping Center redevelopment just to the south. Yeah, I guess I'll echo what Evan just said, you know, initially when we bought the center, it was two or three years ago, we bought it sort of on the heels of getting started on our White Oak plans, and it became more and more apparent that the way the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center was being taken care of was potentially going to be, have a negative impact on our investment, so our hope was, you know, we were going to have the foresight to capitalize on some success that we had with White Oak and protect our investment going into the future. But Evan's right, when we initially started this plan and met with some of the council members, we had some pretty basic remodel plans. The shopping center does suffer from quite a bit of functional obsolescence, there's grade changes all throughout the property, the roof hadn't been repaired, there's mold inside, lots of remediation needs to take place. It's oversized from a small shop perspective, there's about 45,000 square feet there, that's sort of quasi-unanchored, because it's not really connected to White Oak, and it doesn't really have interactive access with White Oak, which is something that we're seeking to change as we go through this development process with the city of Blue Springs. Our initial plans were basically, you know, a little bit of gingerbread on what's already there, and we've taken that to the next step and actually are demolishing about a 70-foot wide part of the center, right in the middle, to align with an entrance to the White Oak Shopping Center and grocery store. I think when all is said and done, we'll have created something that's of better value for the city and better for the community of Blue Springs, better for that whole quadrant of 40 Highway and 7, and allow for consumers in the area to have better ease of transition between the two shopping centers and ease of circulation from 40 to 70 if they want to stop by at the grocery store, or hopefully one of the new restaurants we get at Sunset Plaza. So with that, I would conclude and invite any questions you might have.
If I may?
Yes.
I don't necessarily have a question, but I would like to thank your group for meeting with us councilmen from District 2, and also thank you for listening to some of our suggestions. We look forward, from a council district, District 2, to this being developed and really highlighting that corner. It's something that we've always knew that there was potential out there for the 7 Highway, 40 Highway corridor right there, that corner, and it's glad to see other people have that vision in mind, and so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilman Fowler, did you still?
For our-
City?
Yeah, for the city.
You got a representative? Okay, Mr. Bouchette?
Yeah, first let me say congratulations to the developers of White Oak, on all the success that you've achieved, and this certainly looks like a great add-on and concept of what we have seen and everything, and I know that we probably tried to expedite tonight just to try and, you know, be thoughtful of everybody's time. I just want to make sure from the city's perspective, sometimes incentives, the best intentions are there, but over time, sometimes economic times change. Is there an anchor that really triggers this? In other words, to me, one of the big features is that they're going to open up access from 40 Highway. You mentioned in your discussion about taking down, I forget how wide of a section there, and kind of blending both centers together. Is that a trigger that says, okay, we can start allowing the incentive to flow, or, because sometimes I've seen incentives and there's really no anchor, and then they get the incentive, but they don't provide the pizzazz and the bang?
The short answer is no, the incentive and the reimbursement is not triggered by any particular tenant or an anchor tenant. We had discussions, extensive discussions early on in the process when they initially proposed this, and our discussions and our due diligence focused on a couple issues. One of the issues was, what is it you're proposing to do, and what is the reimbursement? What qualifies for reimbursement? And a second category was essentially what you're asking about, is there one particular tenant? Should it be, are you going to disclose who the tenants are, and what's kind of the business story? And their answer was, and maybe they can speak more to this tonight if they've made more progress, but their answer was essentially no. Their intention is to use the CID to, as a reimbursement source, and provides reimbursement to them to then undertake, to induce them essentially to improve the site, and then, you know, hope they can secure some additional tenants, some new tenants for the site. So the short answer, no, but we did talk about that issue upfront. Okay.
You're sworn in already, if you'd like to come and add to that.
I just thought that I could add something that might help with that question as well. There's, at least here, which is not always the case, there is a certain level of immediacy. They've already had the plans for this big remodel approved, and the plan is to basically go ahead after tonight, finish off their financing package, which would occur sometime in August, and start demolition, I mean, right then. So-
Right.
They're very eager to go out and get that process started, and if they leave the center 2/3 vacant and don't deliver on the things that they were supposed to do, then the CID is going to become monumentally lacking in value to them, so it's to their incentive to get this going as quickly as possible.
Great, yeah, and they followed up on everything they've asked or said they were going to do so far, so just wanted to check. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Culpepper?
Yeah, just a quick question, I know that there are some tenants over there, are they being displaced? Or are they going to be able to stay there during all this construction?
We have one tenant that we have made accommodations for, and another one of our properties nearby, that we're going to relocate on a temporary three- or four-month basis. Other than that, the area that we are demoing out to make way for the new road throughway, there are no other tenants in that space, there's only one small tenant.
I just wasn't sure, when you take out the middle of the building, do the ends fall down?
No, we've looked into that, luckily, that's not going to be the case, hopefully. No, we're, we obviously, it's going to be a little bit messy for a little while, but my experience of these things is you just jump in, get them done, and then everybody's happy-
Right, thank you.
-when the dust settles.
Anyone else? Councilman Kayler? Question to follow up with. On that tenant that's moving to another one of your properties, will there be an intention to come back to that property, or is he going to stay at your other property?
No, it's just a temporary lease, we'll already have our lease done for the new space at Sunset Plaza. He'll be moving from the area that we're demoing out to further west in the center, near the Loop Fees and TNT Accounting.
Okay.
Out of respect, I'd like to not bring his name up publicly, because I don't know if he's told his customers that he's going to be relocating, and I don't want to make that announcement for him, but-
So he or she will be coming back, then?
Yeah, yeah, this, we're just making temporary accommodations, we will already have the lease in place before we move him, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, we'll go to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay, District 2. It's been introduced by Councilman Culpepper.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 4577, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District, establishing the district, and making findings and authorizing actions related to the establishment of the district.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4577, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District, establishing the district and making findings and authorizing actions related to the establishment of the district.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Mayor Ross?
Aye. Next we have introduction reading of Bill 4578.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
That was given ordinance number 4747.
Okay, you hadn't said that yet, huh?
Sorry. Introduction, I'm sorry, first reading of Bill Number 4578, an ordinance approving final plat for Colonial Highlands Third Plat.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4578, an ordinance approving final plat for Colonial Highlands Third Plat.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Given ordinance number 4748.
Next we have introduction reading of Bill 4579. I'll introduce it, Your Honor. Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4579, an ordinance adding a new section 110.135 Meetings-Agenda to the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, an ordinance to provide guidelines for establishing items on the city council agenda.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4579, an ordinance adding a new section 110.135 Meetings-Agenda to the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, in order to provide guidelines for establishing items on the city council agenda.
Move the bill be approved on second reading and given the appropriate ordinance number. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmiston?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Given ordinance number 4749.
Councilman Kayler would like to introduce Bill 4580. Yes, sir, thank you, sir. I would love to introduce the surveillance. All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4580, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Blue Springs, Missouri, by adopting Article 5 Video Surveillance System Requirements, Section 610.300.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second? Second?
Second.
Question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4580, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Blue Springs, Missouri, by adopting Article 5 Video Surveillance System Requirements, Section 610.300.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmiston?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Given ordinance number 4750.
Next we have a presentation by Deputy Superintendent Annette Segal of the Blue Springs School District. Welcome.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for giving Blue Springs School District time on their agenda. So first of all, to coin a phrase from the mayor, Blue Springs School District is on the move.
All right.
And so with that, we have a bond issue, non-tax, no-tax, and also a levy transfer, so it's a debt transfer to the levy, which is a no-tax increase for the voters. So at this time, we'll start the video, and then we'll add some more information. Thank you.
Our community and our school district have a long and rich tradition of educational excellence. Together, we have built a foundation for learning in a unique and special environment. However, district facilities are in need of upgrades, updates, and innovative designs to stay up to speed with the ever-evolving needs of our students in today's world. In addition, current economic conditions have forced us to reduce our staff, limit our improvements, condense our programs, and restrict new experiences. Because of this, the Blue Springs School District Board of Education unanimously approved the placement of a no-tax rate increase bond and no-tax rate increase levy fund transfer on the August 7th ballot. The no-tax rate increase bond issue will increase safety and security, address enrollment growth, improve instructional space, and complete necessary maintenance projects. Providing safe schools is the district's top priority. Safety enhancements include reinforcing internal and external glass, limiting and controlling access from the office to the school, expanding the camera surveillance systems, upgrading the visitor management system, installing additional panic buttons to increase emergency response times, upgrading external lighting and enclosing Blue Springs High School's campus. In the event of a school intruder, evidence shows that the safest place for students and staff is behind a locked door in an enclosed room. Because of this, there is a need to install universal door locks district-wide and enclose the library media centers at Franklin Smith, Lucy Franklin, Sunny Point, Vois Spears Jr., and William Bryant Elementary Schools. Current and future community growth has resulted in the need to expand classroom space at Moreland Ridge Middle School and Lucy Franklin, John Nowlin, Thomas Altekin, and Chapel Lakes Elementary Schools. Additional space is also necessary to meet the needs of our youngest learners through our early childhood programs. A freshman wing will be built on the campus of Blue Springs South High School. This wing will improve instructional opportunities for all students, increase instructional efficiency, address crowding issues, and eliminate the need for transportation to and from the freshman center for classes and activities. The freshmen from Blue Springs High School will remain at the current freshman center. The school will be less crowded, and the additional space will be utilized in the future for career and technical training courses to best meet the needs of our students and community. A flexible classroom and performance space will be constructed to house a number of arts programs, serve as additional rehearsal space, and be utilized for professional development. Many of the programs that will use this flexible space are currently practicing in hallways and lobby areas. Outdoor activity spaces will be increased and updated. The construction of the freshman wing will eliminate the grass field just south of the school. Because of this, additional program space will be added southeast of the stadium. A portion of this area, along with the softball and baseball diamonds, will be updated with all-weather surfaces. The library media center at Blue Springs High School has remained relatively unchanged since the 1970s. A new media center will be built between the LA and PA buildings that will better serve the students and staff. that will better serve the students and staff. The current library will be remodeled for flexible classroom and small-group space. The band program at Blue Springs High School is the largest single program in our district. The current space is not conducive to a functional program. The bandroom is unable to accommodate all the students and their instruments. At any given time throughout the day, students and teachers are conducting class in hallways, lobbies, and the Performing Arts Center. A new band classroom space will be built to house the program and best serve its needs. Outdoor spaces at Blue Springs High School will be upgraded with all-weather surfaces. The performing arts centers at both high schools are in need of new seating and updates. Bond funding will be used to refresh these areas at both high schools. Both high schools will receive a third gym. This additional space will allow for more flexible programming during and after school. Multipurpose spaces will be constructed at Daniel Young, William Bryant, and William Yates Elementary Schools. These are the only three schools in our district without this space, and each of these areas will be reinforced to withstand an EF5 tornado. Additional restrooms will be added to Lucy Franklin and William Bryant Elementary Schools, bringing them up to standard with all other schools and increasing daily instructional time. Funds will be used to complete necessary maintenance projects throughout the district. Projects include roof replacements at 22 sites, HVAC units at 10 schools, and updated kitchen equipment. On August 7, voters will be asked if the Blue Springs School District can transfer 40 cents from debt service to operating revenue. This no-tax rate increase levy fund transfer will result in an additional 5.6 million in annual revenue, and the overall levy will not change. In recent years, district staff have continually been asked to do more with less. Class sizes are increasing and program budgets are decreasing. During this time, salaries have remained stagnant, all while neighboring district salaries continue to increase. The no-tax rate increase levy fund transfer will allow the district the ability to bring back positions lost over the last several years, which will reduce class sizes and allow more opportunities, not only for basic curriculum and instruction, but also for innovative and unique programming that will benefit our students today and into their future. The Blue Springs School District has fallen behind neighboring districts when comparing annual salaries. It is critical that the district increase salaries to remain competitive in order to retain and hire the best possible staff for our students. Technology is ever-evolving, and the need to best equip our students for the future is always upon us. If the no-tax rate increase levy fund transfer were to pass, students grades 9 through 12 would receive their own device. Current technology in the high schools would be shifted to the younger students, allowing for increased exposure district-wide. Because of your partnership, the Blue Springs School District has a long and rich tradition of educational excellence. State test scores have demonstrated that our students are performing well above state and national averages. In fact, over the last three years, the Blue Springs School District's annual performance report has placed the district as one of the finest in the state. Local and national organizations continue to recognize the Blue Springs School District as first-class, including Home Union, who ranked Blue Springs "the best place to live for affordable housing" and "good schools nationwide" two years in a row. It is critical that we continue our commitment to excellence and assure that these opportunities are available to future generations of students. The quality of the Blue Springs School District is a legacy well worth protecting. A legacy focused on children, providing the best, most current educational opportunities, and steadfast in its commitment to the future. Help us protect our legacy. Please vote August 7.
And with that, you can vote absentee clear up to, I believe it's August 1, so the Wednesday before the election. So we're just asking for your support. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Are there any questions?
Our community and our school.
Yes, Your Honor, I don't have a question, but I've been to some of these presentations. And I think the thing that struck me as most peculiar when they showed the marching band practicing, and they were marching and practicing, going around parked cars because there was no place for them to go. And having been in some of the schools that have the open library area, and I know that was the thing to do way back when, and you hear about all these things going on in schools in other parts of the country, it shows how important it is to make sure our kids are safe and to enclose these areas so they are protected.
Anyone else, Councilman Levisay?
Just to echo what Councilman Culpepper was saying. I remember from the CAC meeting, Tom Phillips, Director of Public Safety, talked a lot about upgrades for public safety. Those weren't mentioned in the video, but is that still some of the planning going on to add some of the front door, the new system he talked about, and maybe some of the physical upgrades as well?
Absolutely, in every building. We're very excited about that. And even when they talked about locking the doors, our doors all lock differently, and that would give us some uniform way to do it very quick besides getting the key out and locking it. So we're very excited about the safety and security measures that we're taking in this.
Very good.
Councilman Culpepper?
No question but a comment. When we moved to the Kansas City area almost 25 years ago, moving to Blue Springs, one of the primary motivations was the school district and, you know, the reputation that the school district had. And I come through it with, I'm a very satisfied customer. Spent eight years in the band program, so very excited about what you're going to do with the band rooms and all that. Just very excited about everything I saw in the presentation, and I will be voting yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Anyone else? I've already voted.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. That brings us to Merrill announcements. First Lady Eloise Ross over there has a birthday this coming Saturday. And I'm going to say it this way, and you all can figure it out. She will be one year shy of three-score-year-10. Now, you figured out how old she is. Okay, that brings us to thoughts to Punda. Tonight comes from Rogers Staubach, that great quarterback from the Big D. And I quote, "There are no traffic jams along the extra mile." End quote. Now, I will go to our city attorney for a motion that someone will so move.
Your Honor, at this time, the appropriate motion will be to move that this public body go into closed session pursuant to Section 610-021, Subparagraph 9, Revised Statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including discussions relating to negotiations with employee groups, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed are taken during the closed session, remain closed, and that this body stand adjourned at the completion of such session.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kayler?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?[1784.21]